I understand and I empathize, but I was a New York City police officer, and I've waited up to five years to have a contract settled. Another three weeks to have the proper evaluations and some sort of system or process to these raises, because I think at the very least merit going forward. And I think to give just a blanket 2.5 as it was described is just unfair, not just to the people receiving the raises, because some of them may deserve more than that. It's also unfair to the public, because some may deserve less than that. They can't just be here, got a little extra money, throw that out there. And then the answers we budgeted for, you're spending money that doesn't belong to us. It belongs to the public. And we can't just throw money around like it's, like, you know, we got an endless supply of it around here. We need to start being a little more prudent with the way we spend money. And I mentioned this earlier, in October 2017, the contracts were voted on. So there's no immediate rush to get this done. I think to rush is, for the sake of rushing, you're not putting in your full effort and doing your due diligence on this. You have a responsibility to the taxpayers, you have a responsibility to the kids. And again, I ran through the other things earlier, all repeated if you like, that we're missing. We still, we cut summer school, right? These kids, they can't now move forward to the next grade, because they can't sit in the summer school class.
That's not true.
Well, we did cut some. We have summer school at Suffolk High School?
No, we have summer school at North Rockland, Runford, Rockland, O.C.
And what if your parents don't drive? How do you get there?
There's bus transportation.
Then I'll see. Public bus transportation, that's very different than getting picked up at your house or at the bus stop. But we did cut some of the school programs.
In 2013.
We let our students. Right. So why can't we bring it back and spend more prudently? That's my question. We also cut after-school homework program at the middle school. Do we send them to North Rockland for that too?
Yeah, we had that program in 2013.
Maybe we could bring it back if we have a little extra money, I don't know. We cut libraries in the elementary schools. Can we bring them back if we don't spend this money?
Also cut in 2013.
But again, we can bring them back if we have the money, right? These are valid points.
So we sure?
We also, I'm sorry, I haven't done yet. We were talking about how we were sharing social workers in our schools, and YALI is our social emotional learning. We had an incident where some of our students were victimized this year. Did those students have received any sort of social emotional aid?
I'm not sure what you're referring to, but students are always offered clinical support in serious situations. So without knowing the exact incidents you're talking about, I can't respond to that.
I was vague because we're in public. I was vague because we're in public, but the specifics of it isn't for this form.
Mr. Kerr, when were the contracts given to the board to review?
The contracts were updated over the last three, four days.
When did we get them?
Over the last three to four days.
And everyone has read them?
Have you?
I just got it yesterday.
Sorry, all of them?
There was, I think most of them I didn't get until yesterday.
Okay. So let me say a few things. What it sounds like, Mr. Mackenzie, I mean, I know you say that some people may deserve more, some people may deserve less, but what you just said, though, about all the things that were cut, really sounds to me like you prefer not to give any raises and bring back certain programs with that money. That's sort of how that sounded to me.
Those are your words, they're not mine.
Well, I'm just saying that's what it sounded like to me.
It sounds to me like I saw, well, I'll tell you exactly what I said, if that's what you want. What I said was, "Some people may deserve less, some people may deserve more." I said that we're throwing around an awful lot of money between attorneys and raises, and we're not really considering the fact that we cut in 2013 programs for our students, and now we don't have, we can't get them back, because we don't have the funding. That's what I said. So if you want to rebut that, that's fine, go ahead and do it. That was my words, your words were very different.
Okay, okay.
Mr. Kerr, on your favor of raises, however, before I would give a raise, I'd like to have some type of evaluation process.
So let's just address.
How about instead, how about like we wait until the next board meeting, and that way we could have the evaluations and then approve raises, okay?
Let's address a few things.
Why does it happen tonight?
Address a few things regarding the evaluations you're referring to. Number one, as Ms. Weber said, the majority of these individuals have no supervisors to do their evaluations for them, nor do their contracts stipulate that an evaluation is required to give them an annual increase. We do not have a merit-based system, although it sounds like you'd like to have one at this moment in time. We don't have one. Putting it into a contract going forward is not a bad idea if we want to develop a merit-based system for raises. But as it stands today, that does not exist. So the acting superintendent has put forth increases for these individuals who have no union, who are independent, and it is her recommendation that we vote on these and that they receive these contracts, which are overdue. Whether or not we voted on these types of contracts in October of 2017 is irrelevant, because that was wrong. And just because we're past June 30th and the contracts have expired, doesn't make it okay to push them out even further. These people deserve their contracts. They are employees of this district, they work extremely hard, and they deserve to have their contracts done.
So we can't wait 20 days?
And give them a retroactive.
And for what? What do you truly expect to gain in 20 days?
It's not as though they're not getting paid over the next 20 days. They would get paid their raise retroactively. They're still getting paid what they were making, all of all. They're just getting their raise retroactively. We're asking that we look at what they're done. Matt, you've been one of the biggest proponents of putting a system in place.
Yes, but right now we have no system, and you can't put it in place, you can't put a system in place when the contracts don't have the system in it. You can't all of a sudden, right now, use a merit-based system if their contracts don't have it.
These people were given raises last year without evaluating, right?
Okay, whether they did or didn't, has nothing to do with where we stand right now.
Sort it out then.
And then did it get sorted out, so here we sit.
Right, and now, so at some point, we have to apply metrics to this. Otherwise, the taxpayers and the kids are suffering. That's exactly what I'm saying.
I agree with you.
And I don't understand why it's not getting through.
I agree.
Because there's people here that are paying taxes, and they, you know, we're dealing with 12 employees, right? We're dealing with 19,000 people that live in this district, that are paying the money and footing the bill for this. And we have to look out for those 19,000 people. That's our job as board members. You can't shirt that and don't say, "Well, it's okay, because we don't have any metrics."
I don't think anybody's arguing, I don't think anybody's arguing the fiduciary responsibility that you have as a board member, okay? Nobody's sitting here deciding to just throw money at people left and right. We're taking a recommendation from the acting superintendent to give these raises.
That was defined by her as a 2.5.
You can.
That was her words.
You can approve it, you can vote it down, but that's what's on the table.
So you know what we should do is?
What should we do?
Last year, okay, let's find out who their supervisors were and see if we can get them to do an evaluation. That's right, I forgot, they did two evaluations last year, okay?
I'm pretty sure you have a sheet of paper.
Who could have sure? Evaluations, but it didn't happen. Now you're saying, "Just the 2.5."
That has everybody's supervisors over the last year. And if you look at it, you'll see that a lot of those are no longer here.
What we're asking for, basically, you know, the minority, okay, is basically wait, okay, for 20 days, and let's get some evaluations and some process out of it. Just simply don't, "Okay, you're 2.5." Last year, you know, one person got more than the rest. Another person got no raises whatsoever. So, you know, if you're talking about, it's got to be straight across the board, 2.5 for everyone. Obviously, something was wrong last year, where some people got more and one person got less. How did that work out? And they had no evaluations. How did you determine that this person had zero? He was not worth getting 1%. Okay? So give us, basically, 20 days is what we're saying, and I'll vote for that, okay? And to look at the evaluations as much as possible. But you're forcing it down our throat tonight, for whatever reason.
You are trying to do that.
Don, who is the "we," who is the "they" who are forcing it down anyone's throat? There are seven people here who vote. There are seven people here. If it's 5-2, if it's 6-1, if it's 7-0, if it's 3-4, if it's 3-3-1, there's no "they." There's no "we." It's "we," it's all of us "we." We're all in this together. This is not, you know, the monitor and the Meramec. We're all in this together. We have differences of opinion, that's okay. But don't go into this "we," "they," don't go into minority, don't go into majority.
Well, let's see how it turns out. I know Mr. Donnelly's gonna vote "no."
You know, however Mr. Donnelly votes is how he votes. Don't start, you know, seriously, Don, really? I am shocked, I am shocked. You are a former educator, and this is how you're...
Absolutely, I like process, okay?
Unfortunately, you're trying to create a process without having the foundation to follow that process. The contracts have no evaluat, have no merit-based system for raises. So even if you, I'm sorry, even if you did an evaluation, you technically can't base their increase on that evaluation. First of all, only several of the contracts on here even have a clause in them that they even get an evaluation. The other ones don't even have that. But the ones that do, all that it says is they deserve, is that they get an evaluation at some point after June, that's just reviewed with their supervisor, and that's the extent of it. It in no way, shape, or form has anything to do with the increase they get. So you cannot start today trying to implement a process that doesn't exist.
But Matt, you've been advocating for this for the three years that you were on the board, and every year this got by you. You couldn't at any point say, "Hey, we need to attach it," the same way I did. I didn't get to vote on these contracts last year, because they snuck them in before I got on this board. They did them in June last year. They snuck them in last year before the incoming board was seated.
I just have a question. When?
You could have, just a second, you could have at any time during your tenure done exactly what I just proposed. Put in some sort of evaluative or systematic process. But you didn't do that, but you advocated for it. And now you're sitting here saying, "Well, because it's not there, let's just give them 2.5%."
I'm sitting here willing to accept the recommendation of the acting superintendent because of the unusual circumstances that these individuals are in.
Can I ask you a question?
I would just like to say something here, I've been quiet all night here. We're not talking about another budget of $150 million. We're talking under $40,000. That's all I want to say. That's all I want to say, with all the raises.
Well, that's just the salary.
It's less than that. It's less, that's what I said, it's under $40,000.
And that's the salary, but it's not retirement benefits.
Thank you.
I do have a question. Last year, there were no evaluations, and then the raises were given. What was the process in '16, '17, you know, '15 going back?
That's not true. I can speak for myself, the people I supervise were all evaluated, and in fact, the other night, you saw one of those evaluations from '17, '18.
But was that considered in the raises last year?
Not the evaluation paper itself, but the spirit of the evaluation, the assessment of the person's job performance, yes.
Right, but there were evaluations done for some people, but the raises were not the evaluations that were done. But every year before that, there were evaluations before the raises were passed, because they even tabled the items on the agenda, because they wanted the evaluations over the years they have.
Maybe the majority of the board did not vote that way. In the six years I was here, or the five years prior, not including this year. That was not what my experience.
I just want to say, my approach to this decision is primarily based on wording of the contracts as they stand now. Certainly, it's not a perfect system. I do see the value of merit-based raises, and I think that's an important thing to work towards. But as it stands now, I don't think it's fair to evaluate someone in circumstances that are not ideal and then apply it to a contract that doesn't have that wording in it. So to me, I do see the value of having that in the future, and I think you need to work towards that, because I think you need some way to differentiate someone who's doing very well and someone who's not doing very well to reflect that in the amount of raises that they get. But I think as it stands now, I really don't think that's available for us to have.
The problem is, and I agree with you, I agree with you 100%, the problem is, and what I'm arguing over here, and maybe I'm not being clear in my argument, is that we've had years to put this system in, and the problem is, is we're gonna pass these contracts right now, right? Without that clause being in there, that hamstrings you for next year.
So I...
So maybe we should take our time, and maybe we should table these until August 20th, if we can get evaluations together, even though they don't matter, and add this clause into the contracts, so that we're not hamstrung next year. And we have a process, and we have a system, and then we don't come to the next meeting next year and do the same thing, and so on, and so on, and so on. We need to add that clause into these contracts, or we're gonna be sitting here having the same argument next year. But I don't think that the reason that we're here is to rush through this. I think these people deserve their money, and if that's the recommendation that's made, and that's the board's vote, then that's fine. That's the way it's gonna be. And I don't think, with me and Don and Melissa here asking for a process, that that's so wrong. And I think that if you add it into the contract, and you just take the time to add that one clause in each of these contracts, now you're not hamstrung for next year, and you can make that merit-based decision next year. And Dr., Ms. Weber here has already said to us that she, if she is in that spot, that she will have the evaluations ready for next year, if we as a board choose to look at it. She promised us that that would be the case. So if we add that clause in, we have those evaluations ready to go next year, we can make an educated decision moving forward and continue that same process over and over again, year and year after. That's just the right way to do it. And, you know, advocating for it is one thing. Getting the actual verbiage into the contracts and making it happen is something altogether different. And I think that we should just pause for a second, I know that this got a little heated. Let's just figure this out and think this through, and make sure that what we're doing is the right thing moving forward, because we are hamstringing ourselves if we don't add that clause into the contract.
Call for a question?
Wait, wait, no, Ms. Weber, no, I'm sorry.
Okay, he's gonna call the question, sorry.
Well, I just, Mr. Mackenzie alluded to it. Just a reminder that I am the third superintendent since the contracts were voted on 13 months ago. I have made a commitment to the board during executive session, I will make it publicly, that if I am the superintendent for the duration of the 1920 school year, all of these folks will have a proper evaluation, meetings with their supervisor, assuming their supervisor was in the district, and will be evaluated. That's my commitment to these folks, the people who deserve it, the board and the community.
I'd like to move to table this item.
Can I have?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
No? I guess it's a question for Lee Weber. If we do table these for the next, let's say, 20 days, how realistic is it to get verbiage into the contract?
I'm not going to recommend that within 20 days. There are other changes to the contract that I'm very open to discussing over the next 11 months. I would be open to discussing that, as well as some others.
Okay, but not in the next 20 days?
No.
That's more of a field.
That's, yeah, I was gonna say, if Mr. Shaw would be...
So we'd like to go up to executive, just to ask him that, because you can't do it in front of...
Or maybe they could just sidebar over there.
Is that allowed?
Anybody take the debates? Anybody watch the debates?
Gosh, we have a debate here.
Is this better? This is better than...
Yes. Correct.
That's part of the votes that was called.
So what'd he say?
I'm sorry, I thought the whole piece was...
He can't talk.
Oh.
But you can, you're allowed.
I didn't understand. So basically, I asked a question in terms of timing. Is it feasible to have 20 days to get contracts done? And the response was, yes. However, it may be more difficult to get verbiage into the contracts to have a board say in what the merit system is. So my understanding of our conversation is that if we rush it for 20 days, it might not be a merit system that the board is comfortable with. So that's basically the response that I got.
I, for one, as a board member, would be comfortable with the superintendent looking over those evaluations and then going forward and saying that, you know, this is what I feel should be the raise for that person. That, because they're, in the end of the day, it's the superintendent who's making the recommendation, and it should be something that's based on the evaluations and then the end results is what the superintendent is saying, so that we can go on next year and have those.
The superintendent is making this recommendation to you now?
Without evaluations. You want to have evaluations, you want to have evaluations, though, right?
It's still her recommendation, and the evaluation that you receive is, is gonna be, or isn't gonna be what a typical evaluation would be because of the different number of supervisors that individuals had. I mean, I also have a question.
Now we're talking about changing it for next year and making sure that having the process done.
So I would also want to ask, though, we pulled items 2.18, 1920, 21, 24, 25. Why didn't we pull 22, 23? I'm curious what the thought process was in not pulling those with the same recommendation.
I didn't have a problem with those, because what was explained to me upstairs in executive session and about the salary and what was going on with those two employees, and I understood what your thought process was.
They also weren't evaluated yet this year.
Right, even though they didn't have evaluations, you were okay with that explanation?
You explained it to us, whereas you have a group of names here that everybody gets an evaluation, and we really don't know anything about it.
There was a reason why you had a certain salary for that.
And there's a reason I have a salary for the others.
But it's not the same.
No, I think it's that you didn't like the reason, because these folks had actually a much higher percentage.
That I don't like the reason? No, that's not, that's not at all what I'm saying. I'm saying that you could give all of these raises, but let's have some sort of evaluation process for the next year. And don't say that I don't like what your response is or what the process is, because that's not at all what I'm saying. I'm saying that these two people, that you explained to us what had happened and why you think that they should be at a certain level and gave the raise to make it that level, made sense to me. I understand that. And I know that if they had evaluations, you said what the job they did. You told us that.
The other thing that's different about those two, which is why I asked about the one below it, 2.24, is those two being 1.24 have essentially their supervisor here to give verbal evaluation, either their supervisor, was their supervisor, even as acting superintendent, still was heavily involved in what was going on. So those are the only people on the list that have their kind of continuous supervisor here. That's the only difference between them.
Thanks. I'd like to call the question. Which I have done.
Well, I'd like to move for tabling.
Is there a second?
Second.
So Melissa, maybe move to table. I didn't get who's second.
It was simultaneous, so they give it to Don.
Mr. Kerr, it's a second.
To table, no, to table, so that we can change the contract.
So all those in favor of tabling 2.19 signify by saying "aye."
Aye.
All those against?
Nay.
Nay? Abstentions? I believe that passed.
Could you confirm that?
I believe, Mr. Nippon, you were yank?
Yeah.
2.20?
I moved to table.
That was, that didn't even go. That was to have an attachment.
No, we have to take it off right here.
That's what I'm saying, we gotta renew that.
That's why. So 2.20? Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Mackenzie? You want to table that?
Yes, 2.5, move to table.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Mackenzie, all those in favor signify by saying "aye."
Aye.
Aye, all those against?
Yes, question here, I missed something. There was no, with the order, it's not payable, it's not tabled. Hold some money, okay, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
A little voice from beyond.
Okay.
I thought you couldn't talk.
2.21? Do I have a motion?
I'm over.
Mr. Mackenzie, there's a second?
Second.
Ms. Reamer? Discussion, now we're on 2.21.
Turn.
I am Mr. Chares' supervisor.
Okay.
She did an outstanding job this year, both in her CIO position, both filling in when Pam Abate resigned and was our point person on computer-based testing, which from RN was flawless. I was her supervisor the entire year.
Any other discussion?
I would just say that if we do end up tabling these, it's not a reflection of any one of these individuals. Nobody individually here. I think that if we do end up tabling it, it is to add something to the contract that doesn't hamstring us for next year, if I'm understanding things. It's just the idea that we need to start applying metrics to these raises. That's all that this is. If these people deserve their raises, they deserve their raises, and I'll be happy to vote for them if that's the way that it comes. But I think we just need to understand why we're tabling this. It has nothing to do with the numbers at this point. I think it's more of a contractual addition than the number that's involved.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mackenzie. Any other discussion on 2.21? All those in favor signify by saying "aye."
I'm sorry, I thought you said any other discussion, I moved to table.
Okay. Ms. Reamer's gotta move to table, is there a second? All those against? Any abstentions? Motion passes? 2.25, is there a motion?
Move.
Mr. Weber? Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. McKenzie? Discussion?
I would move to table.
Mr. McKenzie moves to table. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. McKenzie? Discussion?
I would move to table.
Mr. McKenzie moves to table. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Weber? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those against?
Nay.
Nay.
I was an aye, sorry.
Any abstentions? Motion is tabled. Okay. I believe that takes us to 2.1.
I forgot to say something, I realized you already tabled it, and I was least supervisor technically for four months. She's fabulous, so I wanted to know.
Point of order on that.
Sorry.
Table.
Table, sorry. Yes. Thank you. Okay. 2.38. Is there a motion?
Move.
Mr. McKenzie? Is that you?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Weber? Discussion?
I think that we've already sort of spoken on our piece when it was on the civil service report, that I, you know, I think our students deserve a coach. Both of them, both separate teams deserve one coach. I don't think it's fair. I think it's hamstringing, for lack of a better term, one or the other team, because they have to go to different locations for their meets. The head coach can only go with one of those teams, and he has to pick between the two. Although they may have good assistant coaches, their head coach is still not there for what it's worth.
Anybody else? Anybody else want to make comments?
I agree with Mr. McKenzie.
Okay. Anybody else?
No, I needed to tell.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those against?
Nay.
Nay.
I was an aye, sorry.
Mr. Kirby, you were aye. Any abstentions? Motion passes? 2.39?
Actually, we can do this together, 2.39 and 2.4.
Well, I think we have to...
Do a study, okay, all right.
2.3, is there a motion?
Motion.
Mr. Weber? Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Shapiro? Discussion?
On both of these, there were no attachments, and I think that we need to have in the resolution the dates, the location, and the cost.
So, okay, so...
They're in there now? Yeah.
Yeah, that is, yes, that's, that's my fault. I forgot to send some of the information to the board, to the district clerk. I do apologize for that. So, as far as 2.39 is concerned, it's a one-day officer training workshop in White Plains. It's at a cost of $600, you know, for, for myself and Mr. Shapiro to attend.
A piece of, or...
No, total.
In White Plains, right?
Yes, and it's October 4th.
Oh, okay, I see it now and then. Sorry, I wanted to pull it if I saw it.
No, that's fine. Yeah, that's probably, that's my fault.
This probably goes to the conferences in Rochester.
Yes, but let's finish 2.39. Is there any other, anybody else want to... All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those against? Any abstentions? Motion passes? 2.25, is there a motion?
Move.
Mr. Weber? Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. McKenzie? Discussion?
I would move to table.
Mr. McKenzie moves to table. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. McKenzie? Discussion?
I would move to table.
Mr. McKenzie moves to table. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Weber? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those against?
Nay.
Nay.
I was an aye, sorry.
Any abstentions? Motion is tabled. Okay. I believe that takes us to 2.1.
I forgot to say something, I forgot that, and I realized you already tabled it, and I was least supervisor technically for four months. She's fabulous, so I wanted to know.
Point of order on that.
Sorry.
Table.
Table, sorry. Yes. Thank you. Okay. 2.38. Is there a motion?
Move.
Mr. McKenzie? Is that you?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Weber? Discussion?
I think that we've already sort of spoken on our piece when it was on the civil service report, that I, you know, I think our students deserve a coach. Both of them, both separate teams deserve one coach. I don't think it's fair. I think it's hamstringing, for lack of a better term, one or the other team, because they have to go to different locations for their meets. The head coach can only go with one of those teams, and he has to pick between the two. Although they may have good assistant coaches, their head coach is still not there for what it's worth.
Anybody else? Anybody else want to make comments?
I agree with Mr. McKenzie.
Okay. Anybody else?
No, I needed to tell.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those against?
Nay.
Any abstentions? Motion passes? 2.39?
Actually, we can do this together, 2.39 and 2.4.
Well, I think we have to...
Do a study, okay, all right.
2.3, is there a motion?
Motion.
Mr. Weber? Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Shapiro? Discussion?
On both of these, there were no attachments, and I think that we need to have in the resolution the dates, the location, and the cost.
So, okay, so...
They're in there now? Yeah.
Yeah, that is, yes, that's, that's my fault. I forgot to send some of the information to the board, to the district clerk. I do apologize for that. So, as far as 2.39 is concerned, it's a one-day officer training workshop in White Plains. It's at a cost of $600, you know, for, for myself and Mr. Shapiro to attend.
A piece of, or...
No, total.
In White Plains, right?
Yes, and it's October 4th.
Oh, okay, I see it now and then. Sorry, I wanted to pull it if I saw it.
No, that's fine. Yeah, that's probably, that's my fault.
This probably goes to the conferences in Rochester.
Yes, but let's finish 2.39. Is there any other, anybody else want to... All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those against? Any abstentions? Thank you. 2.20 is the NISBA conference. Is there a motion?
Move.
Mr. Weber? Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. McKenzie? Discussion?
No discussion.
Okay. Do you...
I don't know, I don't know all these.
Okay, so, it's here, if you don't have it, I'll just put it out there. The reason why we're doing this one tonight is because the early registration period ends August 15th. So, if we wait until the August 20th meeting, it would cost more money to register. So, it's $470 per person.
Four...
I'm sorry, $490. The conference is in Rochester. It's October 24th to 26th. You know, hotels, other expenses obviously will be set by GSA guidelines if we've done in the past. And I think the recommendation is for up to three board members, and that's just taking into consideration that the NISBA conference in the spring is, I believe, in Chicago.
That's national, huh?
Right. But if we're looking to...
State.
Right. But if we're looking, you know, because, just because of the funds that we have in our budget, you know, if people are going to go to Chicago, it's going to cost more. So, and I don't know if anybody objects to that for three people, I think that that's fair, it's what we've done in the past, so...
We did four last year, but it was New York City.
Right, that's because it was low, exactly.
Yeah, but if people are interested in going.
That's a very good question. Who's interested in going?
Who wants to go to Rochester? Raise your hand.
Who doesn't want to go to Rochester?
It's in October, though, listen.
You can go.
I hope you want to go.
I do not want to go.
I really got a lot out of last year's meeting. I would be interested in going if, if I can make it fly, I thought it was great.
Yeah, we don't have to decide who goes, we're just going to approve three people to go, and then we can decide after, you know, later on, which individuals. So, I don't know, Dr. Nick, if you're available, I think it'd be probably a great experience and opportunity for you.
Absolutely. If you're not doctoring.
Okay, so, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those against? Any abstentions? Thank you. Okay, discussion items. Audit committee meeting from this past Thursday. Mr. Weber?
Thank you. We had an audit committee meeting with our outside auditors. It was held on 7/25. It started at 8:06 in the morning, it was completed by 8:32 a.m. The outside auditors met with the audit committee, with business office personnel, and the acting superintendent. We discussed the reports that get submitted from the auditors, the audit process, and the timing, and discussed any new, any new client issues that, that were going on. It was open to the public, and it was a pretty quick, pretty quick meeting.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody have any questions? No? All right, thank you. Board member comments? Anybody still feel like talking?
I'd just like to apologize for being late again at executive session. It's just that there was a lot to hash out up there. As you could see, when we came down here, there was still some things on the table that weren't discussed, so, you know, I think that, you know, it was positive again. I mean, I think that people are listening to each other, and although it, at times flared up a little bit, it was still a very positive experience, and I think we're moving in the right direction.
I'd just like to recognize Seth Rahnin, who's leading our district. Seth was a one-on-one monitor. Then subsequently, he ended up to be a classroom monitor, or assistant in the classroom. Seth has done a tremendous job here. Clarkstown South picked him up. He's going to do a fantastic job over there. Seth was relentless with his time and the giving. Unfortunately, we couldn't retain him. He was in with the coaches, active in the football, and crew. It was a tremendous loss for our district. Anybody who met Seth, you could never say no. He gave himself over and over. We're going to miss him. I wish him the best of luck.